Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's almost Thanksgiving. We'll get you up a little bit. I'd like to call the South County Council Reg. 23, bill number 22 through order. This meeting is being held in location. Maybe we all stand and agree with that.
Let us pray. I'm dear kind heavenly Father, we do thank you for allowing us to serve. As we begin this meeting, we invite your presence. We ask that you be with us, abide with us, and help us to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. We ask your blessings upon everyone who have come to witness our meeting. Please continue to bless all of our men and women who are serving our country in uniform, especially those who are serving in harm's way. Let them know that they are not alone. Also bless our local law enforcement and servicemen, that they will be there for their families in this time and this season that is approaching. Be thankful for everything, and as Thanksgiving comes, help us to be thankful for everything. And we are thankful for the things you've blessed us with. We ask that you help us to be good stewards of those things that you've blessed us with. And as we go through each item on our agenda, help us to be wise and help us to have understanding, clarity of mind, to make the decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Please, in all blessings, be thankful and ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by retired USF Force Reverend Randy Stewart, who served our country from July 92 to November 2015. He was assigned to Andrews Air Force Base, Washington DC during 9/11, and supported relief efforts at the Pentagon incident. He also served in Operation Northern Watch and Southern Watch, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation Inherent Resolve, which was ISIS terrorists in Syria. He's a major with South County Sheriff's Office and a current numerosity in County Council, District Three. Thank you for your service.
Hand of Arch Luke. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, sir, there's no motion.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. So we'll move to the properly second that we approve tonight's agenda in the discussion. Hearing none in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. The agenda is approved. I have a motion to approve our minutes for our regular meeting for Tuesday, November 8th.
So moved. Second.
That moved improperly second that we approve minutes for our regular meeting for Tuesday, November 8th in discussion. Hearing none in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Minutes are approved. Land use matters and rezoning requests through RZ 2209. And this is the second reading, and there will be a public hearing prior to council taking any motion or any action.
Good evening. Helen Richmond for planning staff. RZ 2209 is at 1990 Highway Drive. The applicant is Gany Construction. Mr. Tisdale will not be represented this evening. He had a medical issue, but we do have two members of Mr. Gany's staff here. They are the property owner. This request is to rezone approximately 2.65 acres of property from agricultural conservation to residential 15. This is the property in question. It's got a limited amount of road frontage, but a significant amount of depth. It is across the street from, well, sorry, we're having some technology issues. I'll try not to touch anything. Maybe. Maybe not. It is across the street from residential 15 zoning, but this part of the property or this side of the road is under agricultural conservation. It is a grandfathered non-conforming site, as are other properties to the north east of this road, because it is the site of some duplex units. This request to rezone the property is coming out of a desire to subdivide the property to add additional units to the property. Currently, there is a single duplex unit sitting in the center of the property. If it wasn't successfully rezoned to R15, it could potentially be subdivided to add an additional single-family unit on both sides, or potentially an additional duplex unit or two duplex units that we would refer to as single-family attached housing, because they would have to place a property line between those two units similar to what we see in a landmark point development here inside the city of South Dakota. So as I said, it is a request to rezone to R15 and to establish additional attached or detached single-family units on the property. Within the R15 district, single-family is a byright use. Single-family attached units are a conditional use. The property does currently contain a duplex, and it is adjacent to other properties and duplexes that are on that east side of Highway Drive. This area is not served by public sewer, only public water, so the lack of sewer will be a driving factor in any future development of the property, as any unit that's put on the property would have to be served with onsite septic. This is what the property looks like today. In the center of the property, you have one single building that has two separate units with two separate driveways. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at the 2040 land use plan designation. This property is actually influenced by the suburban development planning area. The primary goal of this planning area is to through nice and managed development patterns, foster intentional mixed development, and identify new commercial and industrial locations where form and design are focused. Within the suburban development planning area, policies do support residential densities at three to four units per acre for single-family housing. The applicant's request to rezone from agricultural conservation to residential 15 is supported by the 2040 plan. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. The rezoners from the DC to R15 is supported by the plan, and if it is approved, the property could be subdivided to create lots consistent with the adjacent development. Now, have you answered any questions that you may have?
The duplexes in R15 is a conditional use?
No, the duplex units themselves are grandfathered non-conforming. If they would like to put similar structures in there, they would have to do what we call single-family attached. The primary difference being that there would actually be a property line between those two units, where fee simple ownership of each side would be possible, more like a townhouse unit, which would mean that each unit would be separated by a firewall. Each would be its own individual tax parcel, and they could be sold independently of each other somewhere in the landmark point development.
You could actually put two of those units, one on each side of the existing?
Potentially. It all is a matter of how much road frontage there is there. And whether or not the soils and ability of that property can support that many additional septic tanks.
What is the minimum frontage?
For a single-family attached unit, it's 45 feet per unit. For an R15 standard residential lot, it's a 100-foot lot width. So it would be approximately a 10-foot lot width difference between the single-family attached unit for two buildings versus a single-family lot, which is 100 feet wide.
Any other questions, Mr. Brooks? As I stated, we will have a public hearing concerning RZ 2209. Now, we have a public hearing open, and anyone wishing to speak. For rezoning requests for RZ 2209, please proceed to the phone. Please state your name for the red.
My name is Chris Brooks. I want to speak on behalf of some of the residents. If you please stand for the residents or if you want to.
For it.
For it.
Oh, in favor of.
Oh, that's not me. I'll sit back down. Okay, word. I thought. I, I.
Who was for it?
Seeing none, Mr. Brooks, you may now come back forward.
Why don't you say who's not for it?
Good evening. If you want to just stand for those that are seated that kind of speak on behalf, so that they're opposed, raise your hand. As you can see, there's quite a few individuals here that oppose this. There's several issues that we've discovered in the last day or two that bring up some issues. As was previously mentioned, the road frontage for doing an R15 home is a minimum of 100 feet from the picture that was up earlier, from the furthest driveway. As you look at the home that is already there, there's only 95 feet from that driveway to the property line. So that side does not meet the minimum requirement for a standard, single-family detached home. I understand that they would like to put in a single-family detached, which is a fancy way to say another duplex. By doing that, that would take a property that has a road frontage right now of 350 feet, and it would put six lots on that one section of our street. There are no homes in the tuckaway area, which has a minimum of singles detached, which is 100 feet. Everything is 100 feet. It gives everyone space to live in the county, which is why most all of us live out there. We're there because we have that little bit of space between ourselves and our neighbor. Additionally, one of the other issues is that whenever you put those types of homes in there, it lowers the property value for everyone that lives around there. The homes that are, have been built, and I looked up just today, I've educated myself in the last eight hours as quickly and as proficiently as I can, a lot of those homes pre-pandemic prices, I know things have changed, were running between $80,000 to $90,000 per unit. I know that what my home is valued at, and I have a more modest home in our neighborhood. We've invested our time, our efforts into where we live, and would like to keep that neighborhood what it is currently. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Or if you have any questions.
Oh, Mr. Brooks, thank you.
My name is Corey Dyges. I've recently been through something very similar to this, which is the reason why I moved out of my previous neighborhood, because the land that was built behind my previous house, they appreciate the value of my house over $60,000. That's where I lost when I wanted to sell my house. I don't want the bigger lots in this neighborhood. I really don't want it, and I'm pretty sure most of the neighbors are agreeing with me. The house next door to me just sold last Monday for $450,000. Our neighborhood is not a cheap neighborhood, but I know these. I'm glad and I'm proud of the fact that I moved into this. I got a deal on it when I bought mine, but I need to work. My house currently is valued at over $400,000. I don't, and I cannot afford to lose money on a house. I'm pretty sure most of the people in every of the families, that's anyone.
My name is Paul Greer. I live in the 2851 Lakeview Drive, and as he said, we do have a nice neighborhood. I'm old, and I'm hoping to sell in the next few years and take care of my younger wife so that she'll have some security as I'm gone. So I know what my property values to drop for that reason, and certainly I think this type construction would cause that to happen. I'm sure some of y'all have rented property in the past, and when you do that, I have in the past, and sometimes you get your property destroyed when you have a lot of rental property in the area. We don't have, I've lived there 16 years. We've had one break-in. We have a very safe neighborhood, and again, we would just like to keep it that way. Certainly don't want to see property values go down, and I hope that you will see it that way as well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Ann Richardson, and I live at 1760 Highway Drive. And I bought my property in 1999, built that home there in 2005. And as you said, we bought to be back there. We own two lots of almost three acres. We like where we are. When we bought back there, we knew the duplexes were there, because they're at the beginning of the road. Of course, those are rental properties. But when you go further back, everybody's got more space and homes. Tuckaway was even, that area was built after we bought. But I think if other duplexes are put there, then, you know, that's going to crowd that lot, and that means more renters are going to be coming in and out. We would really hope that you all would deny this and allow it to stay as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sherri Phillips. I live at 1950 Highway. I know that people have to rent because they can't purchase, but where these duplexes are, that's the part of our neighborhood that seems to have the most trash on the roads. My mother lives at 2881 Lakeview Drive. She's with me today. She's lived in the neighborhood for 40 years. I was raised up in that neighborhood, where my home is now was woods and a dirt road. And I walk my dogs during the evenings, and I can go out of my driveway and go to the left and walk to her house, and I can get very little trash in the trash bag. But if I walk my dogs and I go to the right, between Robert Mitchum's house and the stop sign, I can fill up a leaf bag with trash, and that's because it's in front of the duplexes that we already have. People that rent and they don't own their home, they don't care where they put stuff. They just throw it out across the street, and we have to work to keep the entrance coming into our neighborhood clean. My mother gets on her lawnmower, and she rides around there, and she's cut multiple people's yards over there at the apartments, as old as she is, and I tell her, don't cut their grass. She doesn't like our neighborhood looking bad, so she goes over there and cuts these people's grass sometimes. And I just don't think that we need more people in the neighborhood renting that doesn't care about our community. If they cared about it, it would be a different thing, but they don't. They rent, and it's not the place that they intend to stay. So they just, they don't care.
My name is Lisa Hawes, and I live at 1955 Highway, plus I also own 1935 Highway, which would be directly across the street from the property. With the duplexes, I've had my husband's garage broken into four times in the last two years. I'm not saying that even for the duplex or anything, but it is an issue. And with owning two homes, if I ever decided to sell both homes, I'm going to lose double money on both of my properties. So the way that that lot is set up, it's, I don't even think it would serve any purpose. It wouldn't look right. It would make our houses look smaller and different than what they are. Where we live at, we have a covenant, so we have to build within so many feet of our homes have to be a certain size. So we'd be directly across the street from where this property is going to be built. I think it would just really not look proper. It would just wouldn't look right in our neighborhood with the houses that are in a certain amount of footage. It may make our property values go way down, and I surely don't want to lose double money on two properties if I ever decide to sell.
Good evening. My name is Robert Mitchum. I live at 1960 Highway Drive, on the property next door to where they want to build these duplexes. Not only is it going to trash our neighborhood completely, like the other duplexes have over the last 11 years that I've lived there, it just, everybody's worried about bringing that property value down. I bought this property 11 years ago, and since I've lived there, there's been numerous renters just come in and just trash the neighborhood like everyone else. Bear with me, I had COVID a while back, and it got really short-winded. I had Medicaid retired and the Sheriff's Office, but, but not only is it just trash in the neighborhood, we just, we would just like to keep it like it is. Everything's in sequence, everything's spaced out equally, and there's just not enough room on that lot next door to us to build another property. There's just not enough room. We just had a pool installed. We will have zero privacy if they put anything else over there. Not only is it going to take our privacy away, but it's going to take our property value down to zero. We're going to lose a lot of money in the long run. Excuse me, I'm a little breathy. So if y'all would just take that into account, we want to go for the rezon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Hi, I'm Kristia Parish. I live at 2933 Lakeview. My husband and I bought about three years ago. Something nobody has mentioned is there's one road in and out of our area. So that's only the main entrance is where they're wanting to build. So they have construction trucks. I've had nail and screw in my garage. One thing I don't want to do with is construction in and out of there, which is going to happen. You know, them leaving their tools in there, then making a mess. And we have a great neighborhood. Again, we looked for two years for our house because we wanted space. We wanted quiet. There's no cars running up and down the road. It's a great neighborhood, and I, I mean, it may be one duplex, but if they tear that one down and put two in there, or however they decide to do it, it's going to change the atmosphere in our neighborhood. So I definitely hope you guys consider not approving those.
I'm Donna Mitchum. I live at 1960 Highway Drive. I'm a little.
What was your last name?
Mitchell.
Mitchell.
Mm-hmm.
Mitchell.
Mitchell. Like my, like everyone else, the space, well, my husband cuts the grass right now on the lot, because everyone that owned the duplexes used to live in our neighborhood, and I think some of them still lives in the neighborhood. But anyways, now they're being owned by outsiders, so therefore it's going to even make it that much worse. And they don't care about the grass growing up, and we're very typical about how our grass looks and stuff, because it's a nice neighborhood, and we take pride in what we have. And that is going to be right next to our house. I mean, like, right next to it. We won't have any space for it. So we just don't want anything else.
Okay, anyone else? We'll go back and ask once again anyone wishing to speak for this.
Mr. Chairman, Council, on behalf of Gany Construction, we also own a couple other duplexes along the street there. All these were purchased earlier within a year, quickly. So whatever anyone's speaking to, your prior years, 10, 11 years, we don't have any knowledge or anything of that, because I wonder your property management, anything that's being rented right now, in that sense. So we can't speak to anything history-wise, is the way it's taken up. As far as people's concerns about space, if you look at the duplex right next door to this one, it has about an 8-foot road frontage on it, so it's already smaller than the ones that we're looking at. If this did get reduced to 90 something square foot, 90 something foot road frontage. It's undetermined if it's going to be a duplex or a single-family house that are put there. And I think people have misunderstood that usually new construction actually increases property values in a neighborhood. If they look at where duplexes are being built this year, they're in line with single-family residences that are freestanding and not duplexes. So property values are in line with the regular homes, so I would not see a decrease in property values with anyone. These are going to be in line with the homes and sizes with the duplexes across, and the homes across the street that are single-family residences that are not duplexes. So the house sizes will be similar value, similar size with it. This is a two and a half, over a two and a half acre lot. So if it's divided into three, you're still talking over three quarters of an acre on average per lot, but these will be, so that we're not be encroaching on anybody's property. We're not be building on anybody's property. The land will be, in a lot of cases, larger than a lot of other lots within the neighborhood that's already there, very similar to it. Trash, like everyone said, there's one street in and out. There's renters that live in all the houses in there, not just in duplexes. Anybody that comes in and out of neighborhoods done trash everywhere. You can drive along the streets, as council knows, and you've started the litter program up here. Everybody contributes to littering up. People that live in the houses where the trash just happens to land at, that's people driving by and throwing stuff out the windows with it. Crime, those are just all presumptions that the duplexes are bringing crime. Ask where's the proof? Are there any complaints? Is there anything from the Sheriff's Department about crime being reported from anybody in duplexes? And again, from, you're just assuming people that will move into these are going to present crime. That's just a presumption without facts or evidence that that, there's rumors all in that neighborhood, I assure you. Or we're looking at them as crime, or folks that are bringing trash, or anything else of that nature. Construction-wise, construction is done on the land. Trucks do come in and out, just like trash trucks and everything else do that come in and out of the neighborhood, but the construction will be on the land. They won't be parked in the middle of the streets. There won't be debris out there. There's dumpster that's on the land, that's broken, so that should be dropped off there. If you have any questions, we are glad to answer them.
Just a quick thing about some of the things that were said. The house, and I know it's a separate lot, the lot that is next to that, that you referred to, that has an 85-foot frontage, if you actually look at the property map, the driveway for that home isn't even on its own property. It encroaches, it's so narrow, that the driveway actually is on the next lot and on the, across the property line. The property line literally goes right onto the edge of the house. So.
You're a real property.
Yes.
You're a real property.
Yes. Actually, no. I apologize, sir. I believe that one is also owned by Gany Construction, as well as one that they purchased. It's not okay. I know there's multiple in there that they had purchased for, but that driveway actually isn't even on that. As far as the property value, again, obviously, if you were to sell a house during the pandemic, the property value, it's skewed. It would look as though it's a, we'll say, $140,000 house for a single-family attached home. But once you take that pre-pandemic, they were selling for $85,000. I live in a 1,400-square-foot house. It's very modest. It's a $135,000 home pre-pandemic. It's a $50,000 difference. So the numbers, if you look at when they were sold and what they're going against, is completely different. There's a house my size that sold during the pandemic rush of homes, they'll sell for $185,000. Again, it's a $50,000 swing, either way that you look at it. But as far as the size of the lots, it's tiny, and if you try and split them up, it's going to overcrowd that situation. Thank you.
Well, he speaks of new construction can actually help the value of properties. It can, if it's new construction being built similar to the surrounding area. Yes, new construction of apartments will help the value of the current apartments over there, but it will hurt. My home and Robert Mitchum's home, my house is one lot over from where he's building these apartments, and my $300,000 house would be hurt drastically by an apartment complex. That's not going to help the value of my house. It's not going to help the value of Robert's home or Cody's home, and definitely right around the curve, these houses go up. They're $400,000. Ms. Richardson probably lives at $500,000 on our house. They just, the values go up as you go around the curve, and an apartment complex is going to hurt all of our home values. New construction helps the value if you're in a likewise area. If they were building a residential. If they were building a residential home that was the same as all of the other homes and it blended into the, to the neighborhood, then yes, it could help all the values. But when you stick an apartment complex in the middle of a bunch of houses and it's like a sore thumb, it hurts all of the values. And that's what that, him changing up the whole, it's like a piece of a puzzle that doesn't fit with what he's wanting to do on that lot, it doesn't go with the flow of everything in the neighborhood. And that's going to hurt the value of everyone.
And now we're going to have a public hearing closed.
I did not measure for the meeting, but. It's over three hundred feet, that's on the scale of this image.
It's close to three hundred fifty.
The acre of the lot is two point six five, right? Two point six five. Correct. You couldn't subdivide it into three, the AC currently, the way AC is.
Um, no, you could do some weird subdivision of this property under the AC standards where you'd end up with a back lot, it's an acre that's got sixty feet of road frontage, so it'd be kind of a weird side lot, where you'd end up with one acre with that duplex at the front and then another acre at the back, which can be done today by right. Um, but again, we've predicated on the soils functioning on that property to do what you would be to do on that back piece.
If there are other options they can do, if it's not rezoned to R15.
If it's not rezoned to R15, um, they would be limited to a single-family housing product and division of that lot so that you end up with at least two one-acre lots. Uh, but it is divisible, not necessarily in a pretty way, but it's doable.
Pretty way. It just seems like they're more subsubdivided duplex or multifamily than a house. And I, I don't know how you'd judge them building a house there, I'm sorry, it's three acres. I mean, most of the lots in the neighborhood are point three seven on average, and anybody, I just looked at one of them, some of them are larger than that levels, but I'm a trial. If he can do something else now, I don't know why we're rezoning R15 right now.
I mean, so without rezoning it, they've got options. Correct. Put homes.
There would be an option to subdivide it to create an additional lot, but it, it would be, for lack of a better word, it would look like a, it would look like a weird pea on its side.
I'm able to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Second. All in favor of denying rezoning twenty-two oh nine, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. RZ twenty-two oh nine, no. Um, those of you that are here for that particular hearing, you can leave right now if you'd like.
Thank you. Um, RC twenty-two ten is a request at twenty-five ninety Peach Orchard Road, uh, to rezon approximately fifty-two acres of property from agricultural conservation to residential fifteen, uh, applicant in Dunlap Properties. Uh, Mr. Tyler Dunlap, also known as Dr. Dunlap, is here to speak on behalf of the request as the authorized agent. Uh, as you can see, this, uh, fifty-one point nine acres is a little bit interesting in its size and shape. Uh, it is the remnant of a larger tract that over the years has had some easier pieces of property taken off of it. Um, at one point, it was implanted pines that have since been harvested. The original intent was to develop approximately fifty-three residential lots on the fifty-one point nine acres, uh, but that has been reconfigured a little when they have looked at what the remainder of the property is. That fifty-three lots was from a preliminary plan that was done several years ago before a large six-acre chomp was taken out of the north part of the property. Because of the size and shape of the property, they're requesting to rezon to R15 because in order to net the number of lots they're looking at, which is around forty lots, um, because of the shape of the property, they're looking at properties that are half acre and slightly larger, but one acre lots would not be possible to do to net the number of lots that they're looking at, even though the gross acreage would seem to indicate otherwise. This is one of the reasons why, if you look at the right side of the screen, there's some pretty significant changes in topography on this property, especially in the northwestern corner. Um, there's some pretty significant terrain in this part of Dalzell. If you look at the preliminary development plan on the left side of the screen, this is not the same plan that you saw in the staff report. This is a revised plan based on changes with that larger six-acre tract coming out. You come up with approximately forty lots with a few larger tracts on the northern part that are segmented and separate from, uh, what they're proposing on the southern part of. This is just a preliminary plan, uh, the rezoning would have to be successful and then it would have to go through a major subdivision review process. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at the twenty-fourty comprehensive land use plan. In this particular instance, the comprehensive plan designates this as part of the rural development planning area. In general, the rural development planning area is not supportive of a zoning designation that will allow greater than a one unit per acre density. Additionally, this is adjacent to the military protection planning area. As we've discussed in the past, proximity of those two districts, we look at the influence of both when we look at comprehensive plan designations. So the military protection planning area, which is intended to protect our air force base in Point Federal Combat Range from, um, inappropriate encroachment and incompatible land uses, is also generally not supported with more than one unit per acre. So by and large, a, a request to go from AC to R15 in these planning areas is generally inconsistent with comprehensive plan when you look at it in a vacuum outside of other environmental factors of the property. Uh, it is adjacent to our, uh, agricultural conservation to north, south, east and west, but just south of this, approximately four hundred plus feet. We do have, um, a subdivision that was approved in two thousand nine under the previous comprehensive, uh, two prior comprehensive plans. So under the, um, twenty-twenty comp plan, which allowed that neighborhood to be rezoned to R15. The twenty-thirty and twenty-forty comprehensive plan was a divergence from that comp plan that we did in twenty-twenty, which created the rural development planning area as well as the military protection planning area the way we have them now. So if that rezoning request were to come forward today, we would be making similar recommendations in terms of compatibility. With that all being said, the planning commission did recommend approval of this request and they started weighing out the odds of the environmental factors on this particular property and the existing pattern of development in the area. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we also have Mr. Dunlap here to speak on behalf of the request.
Mr. Whitehead. Ms. Rubin, in the, in the last presentation that we heard, we talked about duplexes and duplexes reducing the land value for homeowners. In this particular case, we are talking about actual homeowners and not duplexes. What does that do to the, um, process for houses in that area, adding a subdivision?
I'm not a real estate agent, nor am I a property appraiser, uh, so I don't really have the professional expertise to answer that question, but I can tell you that absent a conditional use application to do an alternative housing product, it would have to be a single-family home on each of these lots that would be.
It could not be duplexed.
Unless they filed a conditional use application requesting single-family attached units, and we reevaluated that and reviewed it, it wouldn't be able to be as a by right use. Uh, that being said, we do know that the soils in here on this particular property aren't super duper great to support more than one septic tank that you're seeing on these lot layouts. And that is also a driving factor when you're in the more rural areas of the community that do not have sewer service. The septic service is what drives the lot sizes and what can functionally work on each of those lots. Uh, as for, uh, the development plans long-term, I would defer to Mr. Dunlap as to what he has expected this development for, but my understanding is that it would be single-family homes based on all prior conversations.
The original plan included how many homes?
About fifty-four lots. And it's down to about forty lots because of some changes in what was previously sold out of the parent tract.
Okay, Ms. Rubin, thank you. As with the, uh, prior rezoning request, we will be having a public hearing, uh, now declared a public hearing for RZ twenty-two ten to be opened. Anyone's speaking for this rezoning request, please proceed to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please keep your comments for three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Reba Vincentich. I am confused by this. This parcel looks to be a different address than is shown on this agenda. I do not believe this is twenty-five ninety Peach Orchard Road. Just want some clarification there because I live directly across the street from it. My address is twenty-nine seventy-five, so I don't know if that makes a difference with what we're looking at up here, but it would appear that we're voting on a different parcel length.
I'm twenty-nine eighty and twenty-nine seventy. You live across the street.
Yes, sir.
So that is like, that is, that's behind me, that's behind me, that's, that's behind.
That address would almost be at Sumter County Tire.
Look it up.
There is no physical address assigned to this property because there's no house on it. When we assign addresses, it's based on a high and low range on that particular property, but the legal description is a tax map number, which is, is what all of our legal advertisements also contain. So it's really just to get you in the neighborhood, but the legal map notices have the tax map numbers in them, and all of our property notices that we meld up have the tax map numbers on them, and we also posted the property, uh, on the street kind of. And so there is not a house or structure on that property, so it doesn't actually have a specific number assigned to it, it's a range of numbers, and we just generally pick a middle number on those properties to get it in the ballpark.
Again, anyone wishing to speak for, for this rule? Go ahead, first.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Name of the title of the law, according to Doc, we don't have to touch the property. Um, this is going away this week, we can make this work financially. We can't have one acre lot, it's just not feasible. To do that, you'd have to have lots, two hundred fifty feet wide, and in the day world, a lot of cost would be, with the land and the infrastructure would be six to five, maybe seventy thousand. We just can't, uh, the property is in this area, houses will probably be, we're hoping to be in the two fifty, three hundred thousand yard range, uh, they're going to have to do that, that's why I did. A bill of bills of lock is a house or a necrolog, and they're going to do this, they're messing up in the day world. But, uh, we've looked at it several different ways, I don't know what else to do, because the age, just the problem is only we don't come before, so it's, and I don't tell anybody else, I've been developing property for over fifty years. Ladies and gentlemen, I can't not make it work. I mean, it's, it's either get the, get the rezoning or, I just won't be going before. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, any, any way I can.
Sure, absolutely. You got two entrances on Peach Orchard with this, with the thirty-nine homes?
That's correct.
Any other questions, Mr. Dunlap? Doc, what would this do to the property values of the home in there?
Well, it would not hurt, sure, because the project houses will have to be a million two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we did Persian hills back down the road.
Hold on a second, Doc. Hold, hold a second, Doc, let the chairman get you some more. Gentlemen, please let Doc speak.
We did Persian hills back in two thousand and nine, those houses turned out nice, and it was also built R15, just about, I think it's around four, five feet away from this park. It's hard to find a property in that area, because it's so tough, the property is also that, you know, the hills and all, it makes it, it makes it tough. In the day world, we'd both build a flat park, and if they don't get there, it's a poor park. I still got a lot of generous folks, places, I've built forty years, I don't know if you got smokes, but, you know, give them it, but that's, that's my problem, not, not this one, but I'm just telling you that, just, just fix a piece of property, it's tough to, to develop, but it's, the thing to do is a good location to feel like, so, so, if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I got one other quick one. I had a call. Have you heard anything about a aerial ground anywhere in this, around this property?
Nothing, I know.
Has anybody, has any history of a, of a cemetery or anything like that in there?
We, we thought, we had found a few, we were glad that, that, but it didn't, it doesn't work around it.
My understanding is you did reduce the original number of lots by what, maybe ten or twelve?
Well, the one time we had like fifty-five, fifty-six, I think that, one time might have been fifty-four, kept changing a little bit, and then we're talking about the next before it. If we can get for it, we're not going to get for it.
And this would be in the range of homes with a Persian hill, right?
That's correct.
Same type of home.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. Anyone else wishing to speak for this rezoning request? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against the rezoning request, please proceed to the microphone, state your name for the record.
I'm Chris Burge, I live at twenty-nine fifty-five, which is directly across the street from the property. Few concerns that our neighbors have is what's that going to do for the water table, putting that many homes on that piece of property when directly adjacent across the street is the water tower? So what's that going to do for the quality of water for what we're getting from high hill's water? Another, uh, thing that we keep coming up with is, there's been multiple traffic accidents at Catchall Road, four forty-one, and multiple traffic accidents at Raccoon Road and four forty-one, or Peach Orchard Road. With forty more new homes in that piece of property, every, average home has two vehicles. If that's eighty more vehicles to that stretch of road, that, the infrastructure, I don't know if it's ever could really hold. And we all moved in that area to have a county set it, not big old developer come in and people be crying, because you got a, a donkey over here making noise, or a horse over here bellowing, and then they're calling the cops, and that's more nuisance calls for cops than... And what's that going to do for our crime rate? I mean, yet again, it's more people, I mean, they're trying to hopefully draw a good crowd, but doesn't really draw a good crowd.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else?
Um, Avery Hood, I used to work on the Air Force Base, and I did a fifty-four sixty water tower. Water Tower. So it'll be, everything will be east of me from where I'm at. And anyway, my understanding is, years ago, they, they had maneuvers out there, and they had a helicopter, I think, crashed out there in the field. Well, it's woods now. Or, well, they, they said they cut all the trees, but they replanted trees. They didn't tell you that. So, we got, uh, the fighter jets flying right over our house. You, you could probably watch the, the pilots in the thing. What's that gonna do for the Air Force Base? Do we need the Air Force Base? Because they, they don't want houses. I know that when I worked out there, they didn't want one. They told us they didn't want one. You know, they, uh, I don't, I just think it would be a bad move for something if it, if something happens with, not just the Air Force Base, now the army's there too. I would just ask y'all all, same other, some, of all, of all the people, not just a builder for forty houses. And I, and I understand his, his way of thinking, I mean, he owns fifty acres of land, but he knew it was for trees before he bought it. I hope y'all just look after us, that's the, that's the whole something, yeah. There you go.
Hi, my name is Skip Rousch. I live at fifty-five twenty, right down the road. I think in nineteen sixty-two, he moved down, came down to North here. Did my wife. And then we bought a piece of property. If you look at the map, it goes right across that, what I'd be wearing, I'm talking about. Water tower, it goes all the way back to, which, my, I think, only, Mr. O'Neil owns some land back there, a bunch of other people own it. So, and the road goes right across the property. And our kids, people across the street, us, I don't, we, we had, we did, we had problems, but we don't have no, we can't handle. We don't have no fights. Jake, down in Sumter, they come out on Zuma. Right, it's a happy, it's a community, everything is together. And Paul and Bala, nineteen sixty-two, was strike point, two, the guy threw the old thing. There was an air that was killing, active. But, what is they gonna do? Airplanes crashing, I believe what I'm telling you. Are you gonna jeopardize that? I know we gotta fly somebody. I throw them airplanes. They had accidents. You build houses so my can get hurt. That is the main concern. And nobody builds on the takeoff. You know why? Because two one-ones took off, it's from Shaw Air Force Base, landed in a turkey farm across their coast. The people living there. So, they, I do.
Good evening, man. My name is Joseph Dawson, second grandson of Booker T. Dawson, I hope you're a Baptist church, alright, for sure. Um, one thing I do know is that we do get our water from that area. I know on my piece of property, water table does come up, so soil and, I have a septic too, but, so that's a concern of mine, more septic tanks on, in that area, on top of our water table, and that, that feeds a something. Um, what else? Also, the road collisions on there, we got this, you already seen this, just total numbers of accidents, that's right up on the stretch of Catchall to, um, Ryder Canyon. Actually, this might be common, well, but just right in front of my pocket, say more, but since twenty seventeen, there was, uh, forty-three accidents, total collisions, uh, twenty-four people injured, property damage is twenty-eight, my mailbox got ran over a few times, and, uh, injury collision was fifteen. And, uh, the way the road's set up right now, it's only going to even get worse. Uh, Department of Transportation, I've been on top of them for years now, they're putting around about there, maybe, maybe like, no, there's not enough accidents. My great-grandmother got killed on that road, checking the mailbox. Um, yeah, my family's been here before Sumter, South Carolina was here. Um, from what I've been told, coming down from generations, that there, um, that mound, just, the mounds that we drive through on 441, if you notice, they're buried there on both sides, so it's actually burial now. Um, and also, up Catchall Road, I know there's a family member just buried on the park. And, um, behind the Sonic Lodge there, Catchall Lodge, there's also a forgotten graveyard as well, that man was out for sale, I guess they didn't find it. Five twenty-one, is that the road that comes in off, um, coming in out of Remember? But, um, when they were doing development over there, up on Galloway Road, they ended up finding a burial down there as well. We have a lot of undocumented history in Sumter, South Carolina. And I guess if there was last search done, no going back to Sumterville, we probably can get to the rightful areas, obviously. It's a very sensitive subject for me, y'all. My family's from there. And a lot of people in there, they have his family, but, and I also believe in the deers. Deers aren't gonna bring crime, raccoons aren't gonna bring crime, squirrels aren't gonna bring crime, trees are not gonna bring crime either. And they did replant trees out on that park that they left out. I don't know if the state of South Carolina's paying for that, or did. But, with that said, I hope we leave it as it is, you know, hopefully it's just as agriculture and not more, uh, residential anymore. But with that, because crime does go up, you just look at crime maps around military bases in general, and you'll see it. And I, and being raised at Forts, Oklahoma, thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you.
My name's Gregory, I live on fifty-four ninety-five Water Tower Road, and, uh, it's a very quiet neighborhood back there. That's where we want to keep it. We do hear a buddy donkey every now and then braying, but, you know, we're used to it. Uh, like I say, you got that Persian Hill neighborhood right up above us, and now they want to put a bunch more in there. We all live out there quietly and comfortably without any fuss or argument, you know, and that's the way we want to keep it. You know, like, you know, man says, a lot of deer, and it's just a nice place, you know, somewhere you can go in your backyard and you might watch a few deer, squirrels or whatever, let your grandkids play and not have to worry about, you know, housing development out of front of your back door. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Pamela, Abrams, my husband, who lives at fifty-four sixty Water Tower Road. I never knew a whole much, a lot about rezoning, and I never understood, I never knew that it was considered agricultural conservation. Uh, we moved down on Highway 441 when I was two years old, and I'm seventy now. But back there where we live, like Greg said, it's quiet, we don't have crime. And Dean and I have, in addition to where we live and stuff, we've got three acres back there that it's nothing but deer and squirrels and rabbits. And these animals have no other place to go after they cut everything down back there, all the trees and everything else. And it's a shame because that's what's going on everywhere, everywhere in the country when they try to build houses and we do. So where do the little animals go? Where's the conservation in that? But we live well back there. And I hope nothing changes about it. My grandchildren learn how to walk back there. So help us, please.
Chairman, uh, thank you for hearing us out tonight. My name is Stephen Westmore, and I live at twenty-nine sixty-five Peach Orchard Road, uh, directly across from, uh, the proposed rezoning. Uh, my two serious concerns are revolving around, uh, this rezoning would be traffic, definitely. My wife and kids are out on that road every day. Uh, they have to make that turnout on 441 in this stretch of road that is gonna be handling the extra traffic. Uh, and that, that stretch of road right there is, is fairly narrow, uh, for, uh, in, in speaking along that highway. Um, the other thing that I am concerned about is, uh, my family and my animals, uh, operate off of well water. And bringing that many more septic systems, and, uh, I'm, I'm not a professional, I don't know, but I'm highly concerned about the fact that that could affect our water supply operating off of our local well, uh, rather than off of high hills. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Dwayne Ray. I live at twenty-nine seventy Peach Orchard Road, and I, I rent right there at twenty-nine, thank you, I'm buying the house at twenty-nine eighty. Uh, I don't think the roads can handle. I lived there fifty-two years, and there was no crime. I could leave my doors unlocked, that's my aunt and uncle back there, we had no problem, no nothing. When they built that neighborhood in two thousand nine, you should see the people I got to run off of 41 to come walk through my property, we walked through their property, and no one's there, no one cares about, they're out there doing all kinds of things. You wouldn't believe the stuff I found in the woods behind these places. The roads can't handle it. There's accidents every morning. There's like ambulance go by my house five times a day, every day, every day. Like I said, I grew up there, there are animals, we, we're quiet. We don't bother nobody, nobody bothers us. I just, I don't see it as tongue-called for. I just don't, the roads can't handle it. There's accidents there every morning, every morning. The schools, there's water in the roads since they developed, that house has developed down there, there's water that sits at 441 before you go up by the high hills every morning. You gotta go in the other lane, then. They did nothing about it. I complained about the water in the road, never did. Long as the house is there now, they don't care. Nobody cares about nothing. I just don't want to see it now. I've been there fifty-two years, I'm happy. If it happens, I'll just, so, that's it.
Thanks.
My name is Melissa Myers, and I'm currently at fifty-four sixty Water Tower Road, but I also do own an acre on Peach Orchard Road that is the easement to Water Tower Road, actually. Everybody has said it, our big concern, it's rezoned from agricultural to residential, the road, 441. Most people don't even realize there used to be a Peach Orchard on Peach Orchard Road. There are housing developments also going up, Wingsong Hills, I believe it's called, down Ben and Haley Road, so it's not just these forty acres or forty houses, but it's the extensive residential area that's coming into the area, and there are gonna be enough ancillary services to service the area, fire, police, EMS. We do hear the sirens go by every day. Where are they going? They're going to those accidents that are already happening on the road. Um, if they bring forty more houses in, what does that do to our water table? Because have there been any environmental impact studies done to tell us what will happen? Because from my understanding, the water tower, it's Water Tower Road, the water tower is right across from my home. Our water comes from right there, from the well for High Hills Water Company. Um, historically, that land has been agricultural. They did harvest trees, but there are trees replanted there at the moment, what I see as I drive down Water Tower Road. Um, I mean, it's, again, what are the environmental impacts? What are the potential catastrophic things my Uncle Skip talked about, um, when, back in the sixties, there was a helicopter crash that killed somebody? What's gonna be the impact if something like that does happen in the middle of forty homes? I grew up in that area my entire life. The amount of industrialization, I guess I should say, I see happening on Peach Orchard Road is staggering. And again, will there be enough services? Will there be pollution? Whether it be from the water, the air, I mean, what things that could happen? Those are my main concerns, like, have there been any traffic studies? Because I know even getting into Hillcrest Middle School in the morning is problematic. The traffic backs up all the way past five twenty-one for people trying to get into school. So, I would say, I would prefer if it stays agricultural and not residential. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Stephen Wilson, the J65 Catchall Road. Um, as, uh, the newly that started this discussion off, uh, pointed out that, uh, this rezoning is inconsistent with the current conservation plan. Um, the purpose of agricultural conservative rezoning, conservation rezoning, is to reduce stormwater runoff, protect natural wildlife habitat, and, uh, responsible use of natural resources. Since I've been, uh, since I've grown up here, there've been the Okla North, uh, development that's been created, and now the Pershing Hills development that's been created. We used to have multiple springs on our family property that had ice cold water just coming out of ground, plentiful. Because of the number of subdivisions and the number of houses and people that have moved into the area, that is significantly drying up. Um, this is, uh, you know, hard evidence that this is not, uh, responsible use of natural resources, because the natural resources are drying up. Instead of building additional subdivisions out in the community, because most, most folks that live out in our area live in that area to have peace and quiet, to not be, uh, surrounded by a bunch of, bunch of people, a bunch of houses, to have some place to spread your wings, as they say. With the addition of the subdivision, that is going to significantly change that, as the, uh, other community members already pointed out, the number of increased traffic that's going to be generated by this new subdivision, uh, which already, uh, is a problem because with the base cutting off Fries Road, there used to be a cut through that couldn't delete some of the traffic on Peach Orchard Road. But after the base cut that off, now all of that traffic is either coming up to five twenty-one or going down to three seventy-eight, uh, increasing congestion on Peach Orchard Road. That's gonna cause increased congestion going into the base for those folks, the military members, civilians, contractors that have to go into the base this morning, uh, right there, because there's only that short turn lane right, uh, there off of, uh, Peach Orchard Road, uh, right before Oakland Elementary School. Uh, so again, uh, I, I, uh, you know, request that you do, uh, what's right and what's consistent with agricultural, uh, conservation zoning and protect the natural resources in that area by not, uh, approving this rezon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jeffrey Lucas, I own twenty-nine fifty-five Peach Orchard Road, directly across the street from it. My main concern is what everybody else is concerned, save the land, save the people. I mean, that, that, we moved out to the county because we don't want to live in the concrete jungle. That's why we live out there, not for having a housing development. They got Wingsong going in down there, I mean, what is it, just a big money game? And the people run, people, all the animals, where all of this place's animals gonna go? Where they gonna go? They're gonna go on everybody else. I own two, whatever, two somaters over there, where the animals gonna go? Coyotes, deer, whatever, you know, we're over there seeing up my animals, terrorize the whole neighborhood, go go develop, who's big one be? They gonna buy three hundred thousand dollar home over to development and have a coyote come over and eat their kid or something? Nah, that needs to be, that needs to be dismissed. Say hello.
Good evening, Council. Ashley Nichols, Shaw Air Force Base, Base Community Planner. Um, I'm not for or against, I am just here to provide comment and take back preliminary information to Shaw Air Force Base leadership. We are in support of low-density residential development, which is in keeping with the military protection planned area, as Mrs. Reba did, uh, mention earlier. I do understand the preliminary plan that has been presented today, um, does have some challenges for meeting that, uh, criteria, which is a minimum of one acre, uh, per unit. In the event this, uh- In the event this, uh, particular request is approved, and we'll move forward to do it forward to providing comment and meeting with planning staff and the developer on, uh, accomplishing the goal, so that this particular plan is in keeping with the existing comprehensive plan. However, we, uh, would have some challenges in supporting and hoping to be able.
Good evening, I'm James Bucci. I live at, uh, fifty-four fifty Catch All Road, which could be just a bit adjacent to this, uh, little development. Uh, my main concern is environmental. Um, I know this area really well, uh, walked it many times. That little squiggly line going across underneath, uh, to the, um, west of the development is Roberts Branch. The head of the branch actually goes into this development, you don't see, and there is a rubial spring that flows year-round, right? It's really in the corner, I mean, Peach Orchard and Catch All Road. Um, any development there would severely damage the ecology in this area. Roberts Branch flows all the way, if you look further, all the way to Water River. Feeds the entire, uh, native, uh, environment, um, all the, all, every creature that lives here is fed by this branch. Uh, it all begins right there, where this development has put those trees. So, you know, that's my main concern. Um, you know, it's devastating, see that they, uh, you know, they already took all the trees out, and now it's devastating itself, uh, but, uh, you know, hopefully it'll come back. Uh, and I hope to see it back one day for my kids. Only get one shot to conserve our, our land and keep it, um, beautiful. It's really a beautiful area, there's really nothing like it in the area. Uh, it's the highest point in Sumter, in elevation, and, um, I'd just like to see it saved for our grandkids for years to come. Anyone else? What we're hearing is now, those challenges, make a comment, statement, whatever.
Um, I do know this property really well. I understand the concerns of these civilians. It is a rural area. I also understand that council has got some challenges that we are facing as far as the ability for developers to do what they need to do in Sumter County. We can't afford to become stagnant without development and without new people moving to town. Yes, I would grow something to stay just like the rest of my life, but that's not how it works. You've gotta have some growth, or you're gonna go backwards. So, we've gotta have development. I don't think this is a spot of origin, but I also, like I said, think county council has gotta sit down and look at our planning and our zoning, because developers are having a harder time finding areas to develop, that don't encroach on rural people's habitat and things. But, but right now, we have the AC as it stands now with a minimum of one acre. I think we're gonna have to look at that. We may have to reduce that, so developers can develop without rezoning an entire property and, and, but anyway, that's just my thoughts, but I understand these people, and I know this property really well, and I'm gonna have to move it to, um...
What was your decision? I made one. Uh, I have commented too, gentlemen. Uh, and I was taken into the Lady of Shaw Air Force Base, that came and expressed her concerns about Military Protection Plan area. That takes me about many years, because I came to Shaw Air Force Base as a military member in nineteen seventy, and I served on Shaw Air Force Base for twelve years. Uh, during that time, there was a discussion about base realignment and closure. Shaw was being considered as one of the bases that they were gonna close, and the reason for that was that, uh, encroachment around Shaw. And we have taken a lot of action to try to eliminate encroachment around Shaw. But also, when someone talks about an accident in an area, uh, my job as the base audiovisual manager was that I was responsible for one of the units was the base photo lab. Remember, there's an accident in the area, my lab people had to go out there and photograph the crash site. And a lot of times, people think a crash site, you can go out and a plane go down, and it's probably maybe two hundred yards or whatever, no. The debris filled in the crash site can go for miles. And that's what we were in county when we'd go out to photograph a crash site and find debris all over the place, some days a mile away. Now, I don't know what the plans are, Department of Defense, and if there would ever be another BRAC or whatever, that's base realignment and closure. I don't know that. But I know what happened when it's being discussed, and it's a cutthroat thing, where every state, when they're looking at closing military installation, every state is doing everything they can to protect their military installation. And they will cutthroat and talk about, well, you need to close Shaw Air Force Base because they're more of a risk than my base. And that's the way it goes. You have the governors and the senators from different states, just a cutthroat process. You know, a lot of people say, well, we got third army there now, so we're safe. No, we're not, because they can keep third army headquarters there, and the ninth Air Force headquarters, and fifteenth Air Force headquarters, but they can relocate those planes. They can move those planes, the fighting wing, to another base. And it has been done before, and it can be done again. So, like I said, when I see this young lady coming before us and talk about the concerns that the people on Shaw Air Force Base have, then we need to take that into consideration, because, hey, look at the economic impact Shaw Air Force Base have on this community. And we don't wanna kill the goose that's laying the golden egg. So, I appreciate Councilwoman Eaton's denying this request, and I'm gonna deny it also, because I think there, although I, I, I agree with development, but we cannot risk impact in Shaw Air Force Base in any way. Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mr. Baker's done a second to Mr. Eaton.
Yes, that's a second to Mr. Eaton's motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second to deny rezoning request number twenty-two ten. All in favor of denying?
Just a little unreadiness, just wanted to ask it, it sounds, pardon my hoarseness, uh, but it sounds like, uh, this body is probably heading toward denial, but, you know, but before we take action, I would just like to see, uh, or ask, um, what are the alternatives other than us revisiting, um, the, the size of lots, um, for, um, agriculture or conservation in our nineteen? You know, what, uh, what options, what other options, um, does the developer have, you know? Because we have two entities here, we have the community, and, and, and of course, we understand everything, and, 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 um, and we are very concerned about the issues that they brought forward and take them very seriously. But we also have a developer that has like fifty-nine acres that he needs to do something with. So, my question is, what other alternatives will he have moving forward? With this particular piece of property, because of its size and shape and what's already been removed from it previously, and because of the topography and other environmental influences, um, I don't know what the practicality of developing it at one unit per acre lot sizes or one acre lots is, but, uh, harking back to Mr. Dunlap's previous conversation when he was up here speaking, uh, lot frontage directly correlates into lot costs, because road costs mean something. In our zoning and development standards ordinance, we have agricultural conservation, and then the next step down is residential fifteen. So, under our current zoning framework, this is the next most restrictive district that can be requested for pure residential development. Uh, if this property was in a different location or a different shape, we might be having a different conversation and being able to use the rules as they're written to give some flexibility to development. Uh, but on this particular lot, because it's very long, but oddly narrow, and then oddly deep, and then has lots of topographic change, um, short of the presentation that he's already proposed, that's probably the most reasonable lot layout that you could pull out of that property and still result with functional lots. Planning staff is neither supportive or not supportive of the request. We go back to saying that, by and large, the request is inconsistent with the comprehensive land use plan, but under our current zoning framework, the request that Mr. Dunlap has made to rezonate our fifteen was really his only logical step to try and get to where he'd like to be. I hope I answered your question. Yes.
I've got a quick question. Um, you said that's his only option now. I mean, what, what is it with the mini farms? I see a lot of people now, you don't know where they will sell, five acres, ten acres. Does that require road frontage first?
It, it does require frontage on a public road.
Okay, and then?
Or a road that meets public standards, so it would have to be paved road.
Okay, and, and, um, so as long as you got road frontage, you could divvy it up into acreage?
You do run into some interesting complications doing that with SEDOT and encroachment permits for driveways.
You don't have to pave the driveways, though?
No, but you will have to get driveways from the Department of Transportation. And so they have regulations about how those have to be provided. It is outside of my purview from what my department does, but it would be a complicating factor in cutting this property up into formats.
Well, I, I understand everybody's side of, I taught school around there, I know several of y'all out there, so, um, you know, but I, I know Doc too, and I know he is, when he develops, he does a good job developing. And, uh, and he, I know the base is needing housing, uh, since they tore out all the houses out there. So, I would really like to, uh, give Doc an opportunity to at least revisit this property and see if there's something he's really interested in doing, uh, before I'm ready to vote on it. See if he has another option that he might be interested in, in looking at, um, with this property, uh, at least give him that opportunity, I think. And I, I, you know, I wanna hear, I've heard y'all, and I wanna hear him, and then I'll certainly make a decision. Uh, he's looked at it, he might determine if it might not be something he's, it's worth dealing right now. So, anyway, um, that would be my thought, is to, to see if there's any opportunity for Doc to do anything out there besides the rezoning of our fifteen. We got a motion and a second on the floor. Could I make that substitute motion? To do what? To defer off of Doc, see if there's something that he could be interested in doing with.
Mr. Chairman, uh, now, I'd like to ask a question, please, because I'm looking at what's written on you, I'm looking at. The Military Protection Plan area is intended to protect Shaw Air Force Base, sunset electric combat range of encroachment or incompatible man use, and to reduce accident laws potential. Why is that there?
Those are three of the primary issues and concerns that come up during the BRAC process.
Right.
Um, it's there because this property is directly across the street from where our Military Protection Area ends, but as with many things, you have bleed over from impacts, which is why part of this area isn't military protection, but then becomes agricultural conservation, which has similar density restrictions, but not necessarily the same use restrictions that we would be more covetous and, and protective of in the Military Protection Plan area. Um, in the Military Protection Plan area, uh, if somebody was asking to rezonate from agricultural to a commercial designation, we would likely be, uh, supportive of that, because it does remove the possibility for manufactured housing. But in the agricultural conservation planning area, we may not be supportive of a commercial rezoning unless it's a key intersection, uh, because the agricultural conservation zone's intent is to protect and preserve areas of the community that are presently rural and agricultural in nature. But they have close alignments with preservation for different reasons.
So, you don't see this as any problem with Shaw Air Force Base, protecting Shaw Air Force Base?
Planning staff's analysis is on the screen, that the request to rezonate ACR fifteen is generally inconsistent with the twenty forty plan designation.
Okay, so it's inconsistent.
However, Planning Commission did recommend for...
That is annoying, sensitive area. I would like to second, um, Councilwoman Batson's motion, uh, just to allow bakers, I'm looking at him the same way. To allow, um, the developer, Mr. Dunlap, the opportunity to at least, um, have an opportunity to look at other alternatives, um, it is my understanding, and I may not be accurate, but if we outright deny him, any of the actions that he'd like to take would start over again. Is that correct?
If this request is denied today, he would have to wait one calendar year from today's date to ask to rezonate to the same designation.
And that's, that's my point.
However, it would not affect the existing agricultural designation.
Okay, and that's my point, and that's my reason for giving him some grace.
We have a motion and a second to defer this rezoning. Any further discussion? All in favor of deferring this rezoning request? Please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of opposed to?
Uh, the pass is, it is deferred.
So, just for these folks, I mean, we, this is, we're not just gonna keep affirming this thing, we are gonna get an answer, and we're gonna let you know something as to where, where we can move with this, that everybody can be comfortable.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I, I feel the same way about giving the developer every opportunity to use this property. It's his property, he wanna use it. But at the same time, I got to be concerned about any decision he makes and the impact it's gonna have on the survival of Shaw Air Force Base. Because again, like I said, if you weren't involved with BRAC, base realignment and closure, the only thing that kept Shaw Air Force Base off that list was the relocation of a third army on Shaw Air Force Base. It was up on the list, so I'm going to have it again, but I wouldn't wanna put Shaw Air Force Base at risk. So, if he comes back with a plan that is taking the risk out of Shaw Air Force Base, I'm, I'm fully supportive of it. I, 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 like I said, I wanna see him use his property and not just let it sit there. But at the same time, I got to look at the... But at the same time, I gotta look at the big picture.
Okay, we have deferred second reading. We're moving on with the agenda. Ordinance number 22981, third reading. Mr. Chairman, the council, this is third reading on ordinance to amend the masterclass of the district sector. Hold up your lead count. Okay, my turn. Order 22981, ordinance to amend the sector. Hold on, Park will bring it to the ad, the parcel where Honey Solar is located, Solar Farm. This is third reading, there are changes in second reading of the public hearing, pardon the third reading. Any questions? We're also going to have a public hearing before we take action on third reading. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance number 22981? Please step to the microphones, state your name for the record. Seeing none, we have third reading.
Sir.
We've moved to property segment, then we have third reading on ordinance number 22981, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye. All opposed. 22981, with that. Ordinance 22982.
Mr. Chairman, councilmember, good evening. Ordinance 22982 is the first reading on a request from staff to amend the county's 2022 operating budget to utilize up to $700,000 from our fund balance, which would allow us to award a bid to Hawkins and Co. for the renovation of the Magnolia Place building.
We approve for reading?
Sir.
And we'll move to property segment. We have first reading on ordinance 22982, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading is passed. Coming down to committee, reports in the fiscal tax and property committee did meet today. All members present. We received two reports where no action was taken. One was a financial update from our finance director and one was a briefing of the election results as it relates to the 2022 pinnacle progress. We have a motion and a second from committee to authorize the administrators to enter into negotiations with potential buyer of county property. Any discussion? Located on Pine Wood Road, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye. We also have a motion and a second to authorize the administrators to enter into negotiations to lease warehouse space in county property. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed. Coming down to council, I'm sorry, report to council members on other meetings, trainings, and our conferences. Monthly reports, Mr. President.
In your package, you have the sheriff's office monthly report as well as teacher forum that's being held this week. And council members that would like to participate, please let me know. And that's next week on Monday. Chamber of Commerce will be having their legislative breakfast as well, and that will be opened up shortly. So, let me know if you plan to participate. And then monthly, Public Works Department report is in.
Excuse me. County administrative report, please.
No report, Stephen, thank you, sir.
Okay, coming down to that portion of the agenda where we allow public comment from citizens desiring to speak to council. Anyone desiring to speak to council, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
I don't know. My name is Richard Gittin. We'd like to find out, can you get some help on Canoe Road Lane, get the county to maintain it? They used to maintain it, they just all of a sudden quit with it. The road was rough. When you come out to the stop sign right there, when you look to the left, you can't see. You got a hole on that end to the highway. Look that way. Every time we called them, they said it's a private road, but everybody's papers got county, fifth foot, county maintaining roads on it. We'd like to see if we can get some help, see if y'all can help us by getting it straight, maintain it. We got some more pictures, we got some more pictures back there, you know, if they're on the ground.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm in the Bronx and I live back way through 25 Canoe Road Lane. And I actually brought my deed that actually says that it is dirt road, slated by Slumford County. I just don't know what the deal is about. It's such a hard subject to get somebody on there to scrape the road and to cut the end of the road. My husband has literally got out there with his RV heater to keep our daughter and myself safe from having to go in the road to get to turn, to get out. Because it really, you don't think about it, but people fly on that road. It's beginning to be a safety issue as long as it's not being maintained like it should be. So, we, um, there's more of us that are here that live on that road that agree that it needs to be maintained. It needs to be scraped. That's all we're asking, is it to be scraped and the end of it be cut, washed like it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, council. My name is Gwen Patmore and I attend the Slumford Seventh-day Adventist Church on 103 North Pike West. And as you know, that side of the freeway is food desert. And folks are crossing the other side of the freeway to get to stores and children are being killed crossing over. So, what we have done, we had a health food store there, and what we've done, we've expanded it and we can serve all of the community, try to keep whoever we can from crossing over and being killed. Well, we have done that and the residents have started walking down. And we've run into another problem now. In front of the apartments, the sidewalks, as you get a little further down to the first street, the sidewalk ends. And so, now they're having to walk in the street, which is still a problem with getting hit by cars. And going back, their backs are to the traffic as they walk down, back home. And so, it's a, it's a problem with no sidewalks. So, here we are with no sidewalks on the side of the highway, that's a food desert, that if they walk down there in the street, if they cross over the highway, which they're not supposed to be doing, it's still a hazard. And Dr. Williams had suggested to me about the pedestrian light walk. And I looked into that and the government is looking at it because it's eco-friendly. It gets people out of their cars now walking in an area of that state. And the federal government will cover that cost. That's just another solution is trying to fix the problem on our side of North Pike. Okay, we, we've already put a store in there and we still have a problem, no sidewalks. In an area that's low income, a food desert. So, we either need sidewalks or bicycle pedestrian walkway to help them get food and the resources that they need to survive in that community.
Good evening, council. Brenda Williams is my name. I represent the family unit, 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable organization. And I would like to again commend Mrs. Patmore and the Seventh-day Adventist Church in having the one and only store, let me say that one more time, the one and only store on that side of the highway, North Pike West. They opened up, grand opening, had a good crowd. And sure enough, there is no sidewalk. And actually, when you look at how that road is fixed, the South Carolina D.O.T. people, a young fellow, Mr. Ken Martin, over the projects for the South Carolina D.O.T., and the young fellow, Mr. Hal Kelly, senior engineer with the city, who works with SUAT, Sumter Area Transportation State, which gets $5 million a year, I just found out the other day. It used to get to 2.5 billion, that'd be $5 million a year. So, we want SUAT and the S.D.D.O.T. whoever to get together with the city and the county. I understand that SUAT will be coming before you all very soon, asking for some monies, plural, to see what they can do to get a sidewalk. It's gonna be difficult. I'm not an engineer, but some of that road almost goes into people's front yard. We've talked with the Santee, Lynches, RTA people, a very nice lady, Mrs. Lottie, I forget her name. Jones, yes, Mrs. Lottie Jones. And I met with them most recently to get a route fixed where they can have RTA buses actually go into that community. There are a lot of mobile homes and dirt roads that are really bumping in, out of commission almost. So, the RTA people, Mrs. Jones, met with me and some other people to see if they can pencil in a little route to pick up people, take them to the dollar counter, take them to Walmart, take them to the pharmacy, take them to places where they can buy groceries in and after, to see if we can get that food desert some help. Last but not least, there's a food truck now that I talked with some people. I just happened to see an advertisement on, in the paper. And a food truck is interested in coming to that area on days that the store is not open. So, please, for God's sake, let us help the people that don't have a whole lot of money. Let us please think about them. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Brenda Williams. Anyone else wishing to speak? Any public comment is closed.
One more question, Mr. Eaton, you saw my South half of the tree. Sorry, just, okay, that's all you, thank you.
The first round.
Second.
We'll move to property segment, that we've done any discussion. We are.